Hi, Tom, can you hear us all right? You're on mute, but that looks like.
I'm on mute. There we go. How's that? How is everyone?
Perfect. Well, 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 we got a packed chamber here.
Ah.
That could be difficult to keep.
Well, I thought I'd give it another week. I mean, we sit so close to each other. So I mean, I've been, I've tested negative Sunday, tested negative Monday morning, tested positive Monday night, tested negative twice this morning, but I'm just not going to chance it. We sit too close, so.
Thank you.
Have about three minutes. We have another three minutes, so.
Don't worry.
Be afraid of vamp.
Talk amongst yourselves. We'll give you a topic. What is some of those? Linda, what was that character on Saturday Night Live?
Yeah, it was weird.
Like Jewish mother who used to, that was Veklakt.
It was Roseanne, it wasn't her, but it was, was it that actress?
No.
No, it was later?
No. Yeah, yeah, it was later. And it was. It was Linda something. The character's name was Linda.
No audio. David, are you sure there's no audio? Tom could hear us.
Or use a.
Tom, can you still hear us?
I can. Yeah.
Okay. I don't know why you can't hear us, Dave. I'm sorry. Oh, I should answer. He can't hear us. I'm telling him I'm sorry. I can't hear. All right, hold on. Goodness gracious.
That's why we have the chat function.
I get, you know, it's been a long day, counselor.
That's what he's doing.
Oh, I'm spelling here wrong. Jesus Christ.
There's a couple of different options for the word.
I can text him.
I just replied to the thing.
Oh, cool.
I've already worked. He's logged off. Or maybe he'll call in.
Yes. Yeah, it might get a little better.
Oh, you've got a date. So excited. We had a date and then we deleted it because of COVID.
Yeah. It's October. How are you doing?
Okay.
Six.
I haven't been getting emails.
Exactly, exactly.
That would be. And it's like in Williston to a place they've been before and like. I thought of it last night. I was like, wait a minute, I can use, I was trying to figure out how to like, because I wanted to like surprise her with something. Also not trying to spend a trillion dollars.
Did you read that?
Hi, Sam.
Hey, how are you?
I did. I read it this morning. I shared it to all my coworkers. Yeah, I actually thought about it, but.
Under the clerk's report.
Yeah, yeah.
I, it, it actually brought tears to my eyes. I was like.
That is very.
Was that Albert?
She's very sweet.
Fight.
No, not that I know of. It was one of those, you know.
I'd like to do an award for renovating houses.
The racist slurs. I mean, it's just.
It's the city recognizes you.
I imagine she told you all about her. The daughter with the boyfriend.
It makes me so sad. I mean, it's just.
Yeah.
She's, she's good.
Um, no, Teddy and I were.
So we don't, she doesn't know why.
It's seven o'clock, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Do we know if David can hear you?
Oh, my gavel. I'm a gavel. It is seven o'clock on Tuesday, February 7th, 2023, and I'll call this Berry City Council meeting to order. Council present tonight, we have Council Sean, Councilor Sean Bell, Councilor Booton, Councilor Wazzaq, Councilor Stockwell, Councilor Lozon is joining us remotely, and I am Mayor Hemrick. We have several members of staff joining us tonight. Manager Charlotte Castro, Clerk Treasurer Dawes, Assistant Fire Chief Aldsworth, and I think that's it. Okay, all right. And tonight's agenda is available online or is available online and is in the back of the room if you'd like a copy. The meeting has been publicly posted, is being recorded, and is subject to Vermont's open meeting law and the council's rules of procedure, which are available online. I'd like to offer a warm welcome to all of our guests joining us tonight. And for those of us joining us online, please keep in mind that the chat function should only be used for technical issues or difficulties. And if you could remain on mute when you're not speaking, that helps avoid interference. Please raise your hand or signal if you'd like to be recognized. I'll call in speakers in order, allowing those who haven't spoken yet to speak first and limiting time if necessary to do the city's business. I'll ask that you state your name for the record, and if you have any questions about process or procedure, please ask, and we will get it sorted. And last, I want to thank everybody for participating and engaging in a civil way. With that, it takes us to adjustments to the agenda. Manager Charlotte Castro, do you have any adjustments?
No adjustments, Mayor.
Any adjustments from members of the council? Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to visitors and communications. This is an opportunity to speak to something that is not on the agenda. If you would like to speak to something that is on the agenda, just raise your hand when we take up that matter of business. Is there any item for visitors and communication? I see Council Lozon, you have your hand raised.
I do, Mayor. Thank you. Under Communications, I think all of us, I believe everyone on the council received a copy of a letter that the governor wrote to Tracy Lewis, the Executive Director of the Berry Partnership regarding the decorations around the city during the holidays. And I wonder if we could have that letter read, read into and entered into the record, please.
Absolutely. Let's.
Ms. Dawes, you're always the scribe.
This is a separate act, proclamation of the governor. I'll do that as item eight. Let's do it as item eight. We'll call it B1, and before the Capitol Mutual Fire Aid.
Perfect.
Are there any other items for visitors or communication?
Keep that online.
All right. Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to the consent agenda. We have a couple of items on the consent agenda. We have minutes of the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, January 31st. We have the city warrants from the week of February 8th, 2023. Are there any office licenses or permits tonight?
No.
Carol? Okay. No, not, no item, nothing under C. Approval of updates to the accounts payable policy that was on our consent agenda last week. The markup didn't make the packet, but we have the markup this week, just administrative changes. And then approval of the 2023 certificate of highway mileage to the Agency of Transportation, which I understand they use to base our state highway aid off of each year, right? So those are the items on the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Stockwell, second by Counselor Sean Bell. Is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, the consent agenda is adopted. That takes us to item.
Excuse me, I'm going to send around the certificate of highway mileage. There's a block down at the bottom here that says signatures of selectmen, aldermen, trustees. It also includes counselors. So squeeze your signature in there somewhere. Thank you.
So that takes us to item five on the agenda, the city clerk and treasurer report.
Um, that would be me. The, we've ordered our ballots because council approved the warning at last week's meeting. Expect to have them the end of this week, the beginning of next week, at the very latest statute requires that we have them available at least 20 days in advance. So that means next Wednesday, which is the 15th. We certainly will have them in advance of that. As soon as we have them, we will mail out ballots to those 335 people who have requested ballots to date. And ballots will also be available for people to come in and vote early in the office. I have posted the warning, all of the warnings, which is the Berry City Warning, Central Vermont Public Safety Authority, Berry Unified Union School District, and the Central Vermont Career Center. They're all posted on the city website. You can, so you can see what the questions will be on the ballot. And once we have the, the digital versions of the ballot, I will put sample ballots up on the website so people can look at those. We are a week away from the second quarter property taxes, which are due by February 15th, which is a week from tomorrow. So stop by the office, pay online, use the Dropbox, put it in the mail. We just need to either have it by close of business on Wednesday, the 15th, or it needs to have a US Post Office postmark dated the 15th or earlier to be considered paid on time. So, and I, this is not something I usually do, but I was, I'm going to try not to cry, received, I get a lot of stuff from the, from various and sundry emails, and this came through the Agency of Transportation. It is a transcript of the governor's remarks today during his weekly press conference on civility and respect, and I wanted to share it. "Good afternoon. I want to start today by addressing some concerning incidents we've seen over the past few months at youth sporting events, from spectators in the stands using racial slurs at players of color to the tragic violence in Alberg recently. Now, I understand the passion surrounding sports, but it's clear we have a problem, and we should not tolerate the hate. And it's not just at these events or sporting events in general, or unique to Vermont. I believe it's a symptom of a much deeper problem where there's far too much anger and a lack of respect in our society. We're constantly being divided into camps, whether it's politics, religion, race, or social issues. Everything has turned into us versus them. Too many, too many want to stoke fear, raise the temperature, which can sometimes lead to violence. We see politicians convince their supporters that the other side is the enemy, and some in the national media choose to ramp up conflicts to get more views, sell more papers, or increase their ratings. And when both politicians and media are successful with these strategies, they end up pitting neighbor against neighbor. Unfortunately, over the past several years, we're seeing more and more of that buildup and boil over. It leads to big problems like storming the Capitol, but also on a smaller scale like what happened in Alberg. None of us should find this acceptable, and all of us have an obligation to tone down the rhetoric, recognize the humanity in everyone, including those we disagree with, and just be better role models for our kids. The idea that a brawl would break out amongst adults in front of their kids at a middle school basketball team game is just plain sad. Our kids watch us every single day, and many of them want to be just like us. What message are we sending? What are we teaching them about how to handle disagreements when this is what they see? I think we should all ask ourselves what we can do in our everyday lives to help bring down the temperature a bit and be a better human being. Maybe it's deciding not to wade into that keyboard feud on social media with someone you've never met. Maybe instead of flipping off the driver who cut you off, you let it go and reflect on the fact that you've probably made a mistake or two behind the wheel as well. We also have a responsibility in this building, too. And while this was certainly red in the State House, it's true here, too. From public servants to lobbyists and those who report on it, not every disagreement has to be a battle or a fight. I think almost everyone here just wants to make Vermont a better place. So let's use that as a starting point. Now, reasonable people can disagree on the issues. In fact, it's healthy to do so. But it doesn't mean we're not trying to do what we think is best, and it certainly doesn't mean we don't care about the well-being of others. We just have different thoughts and approaches on how to get there. It all comes down to respect and civility and doing our part to calm things down a bit when tensions are high and things get heated. At the end of the day, whether you're a parent, coworker, public servant, or leader in any capacity, the things we say and do carry much more weight than we might think. So before acting, just remember, regardless of age, we're all role models to someone, and we all need to play our part, and it's never too late to be a better person. Thank you.
Thanks for reading it. Thank you, Carol. Are there any items for the liquor and cannabis control board?
Nope.
It takes us to item seven, the city manager's report.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of items to update council on. First of all, just want to thank the city staff that assisted with the response to the extreme wind chill event last weekend, just another really tough weather event that luckily we were able to get through with some great leadership, including our deputy chief here, who's a real connection to a lot of our stakeholders and other agencies. So we had fire department, fire department prepared to transport people because these were life-threatening temperatures. And also much appreciation to the good Sam, which provided warming and overnight shelter space. They were able to take care of of our neighbors who have homelessness issues and housing fragility. So Rick and I were in touch, and they did a great job making sure that. Couple of water main issues to report. As Counselor Stockwell knows, we had one in Ward 3 this morning. Crews worked to repair a main breakout railroad street. Limited impact. It's easy to say because I wasn't impacted, but it's eight houses, and for those eight people, I know it was, those eight homes, I know it was an impact. So any one impacted is one too many, but luckily it was lower scale. Our crews were able to repair this, and they were completed before 3, which was great and ahead of schedule. There will be an additional water break repaired tomorrow. This is due to a leak that was confirmed in the water main that serves homes on Lawrence Ave and Lower Brown Ave. The leak will be repaired tomorrow. We will reflet all the homes. There's approximately 12 homes that are impacted by this, and the repair will take approximately four to six hours. So we will be, make sure to be in contact with them. But again, limited, limited impact, except for those people unfortunately who feel it. And once water restored, just a reminder for everyone who goes through this that it's recommended you run your cold water tap for 10 minutes to get rid of this coloration. And then really, really excited that we are going to put out our paving contract next week. So we're releasing it for spring, summers projects. We have seven main projects on our list. This will be catching up on work that was scheduled in FY '23. So we're going to do all of that work, and we want to start working on the 24 list. We didn't have a paving contract next year, so we need to do that backlog work. As much of the 24 work we can do, we will, but really excited that we will have a paving contract. This is probably the issue I hear about the most. So we will be getting that out and looking forward to having work for this spring and summer and making some needed improvements.
Thank you. Other questions for the city manager? All right. Hearing and seeing none. Thanks for that update, Eklis. That takes us to our first item of new business, which is a proclamation honoring Sue Higbee for 20 years at Studio Place Arts. And I will read the proclamation. Proclamation honoring Sue, Susan Higbee. Whereas February 2023 is the 20th anniversary of Susan Higbee's service as the Executive Director of Studio Place Arts, also known as SPA to some. And whereas during her tenure in this position, SPA has grown to become a regional cultural organization of great distinction, offering more than 400 exhibits involving thousands of local artists that are free and open to the public in four exhibit spaces in the SPA building and two other locations on Main Street, covered widely in local, statewide, and regional media. And whereas SPA has mounted an annual exhibit of stone arts every year in its main floor gallery featuring, featuring local artists and celebrating the important legacy of stone arts and stone carvers. And whereas Susan Higbee has honored 16 older artists with a retrospective exhibit, many with important links to Berry, including John Hannah, 2009, Frank Gaylord, 2015, and Giuliano Cecanelli, Sr., 2016. And whereas Susan Higbee worked to secure funds from the Semper Bond Fund and leveraged those funds with businesses and other private donations to increase stone sculptures from three to an additional seven and created the self-guided art stroll map to draw increased attention to Berry's stone assets, including the Zipper Park next to the SPA building, which draws many out-of-town visitors. And whereas the Vermont Creative Network estimates that Vermont's creative economy represents approximately 8.6% of the total economy, and the National Endowment for the Arts calculates that the arts and cultural activity creates 2.9% of Vermont's gross state product. And whereas SPA significantly enhances the local economy in Berry by attracting visitors, students, and workers in the building's 12 resident studios to Main Street, who also patronize many other businesses. And whereas Susan Higbee has operated SPA's diverse and year-round educational programs that provide classes and workshops for both children and adults of all abilities and experience. And whereas under Susan Higbee's leadership, SPA has sought out collaborations with other organizations and major institutions of education such as Very Special Arts, now called Inclusive Arts Vermont, the Ford Foundation, Reclaiming Midwives, All My Babies National Travel Exhibit, the Nagoya Japan University of the Arts, the Surface Design Association, Vermont Book Arts Guild, Vermont Weaver Skilled, Vermont Studio Center, the Center for Cartoon Studies, Vermont College of Fine Arts, Spalding High School, Association for Retarded Citizens, and the Washington County Mental Health Services. And whereas Susan Higbee has been a tireless advocate for Berry, working with Homecoming Days, serving on city council, and for many years on the Civic Center Committee, assisting with children's activities at the Mathewson Playground, and many other projects. Therefore, I proclaim that on the occasion of the SPA Open Studio on Sue's 20th anniversary with SPA, February 11th, 2023, 2023 be Sue Higbee Day in Berry to recognize and honor her significant contributions to the vitality of the city of Berry and to extend to her a mayoral key to the city.
I know we've done it. We've got a record of that.
I'm back, I'm back.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the honor. And it's just a real pleasure also to look around this room and see so many people who have been involved with Studio Place Arts for many, many, many years. And what I, I thought, I was kind of excited when I saw the fire department was listed on the agenda, and I'm really glad you're here. I spoke briefly with Chief Cushman at his swearing-in last week, and also I've spoken a number of times to Chief Brent about the condition of the Nichols Block the evening that the fire took place. And there is so much in common between those who ran to the building to put out the fire and then the secondary group who ran to the building to create new fire. And I just want to honor the founders for doing something that many would have felt was nearly impossible. Janet Van Fleet, Georgia Landau, and Maggie Neal are here in the audience, and they represent a part of the original group of people who ran towards a shell of a building, a building that had been nearly damaged by fire, but they had fire in their belly, and they had the passion that all artists have to create new from something that maybe is worn out. And I just thank you for being the inspiration over the years. At the same time, I want to recognize, I've got two board members here, Michael Ridge and longtime board member, there you are, Daryl Garland. Of course, it's really an amazing thing to, to have such creative, talented, and hardworking board members. I have an amazing staff member here, Athena Tasiopoulos, in the back row. And I've had a number of really fantastic people who have helped as staff members over the years. And of course, a nod to Mark Wasco for being a terrific partner over the years and being the SPA delivery person from Chittenden County to Berry. It's, it's really wonderful to organize major exhibits and to know that I have a set of wheels that can bring artwork to our town. Thank you, Mark. And it's, it's really been a wonderful 20 years. It's hard to believe, and I certainly won't belabor the point of the amount of hours that it takes to create something from nothing. But it has been a real exciting project and very rewarding to think of how we stand out in the region. It's not just a small visual arts center here on Main Street in Berry. It's a visual arts center that's viewed as a model around Vermont. And I, I thank all of you for being a part of this, and of course, it's a real honor to have you as my colleagues and friends. So thank you for being a part of my life.
Sue, before you get up, before you get up, State Representative Peter Anthony has something to present from the House of Representatives.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Sue. Representative Williams and myself asked the House to recognize Sue in the form of a concurrent resolution signed by Lieutenant Governor Zuckerman, Speaker of the House Karwinski, and if I may read the preamble, "House Concurrent Resolution honoring Susan Higbee on the 20th anniversary of her outstanding service as Executive Director of Studio Place Arts in Berry." And with the council's permission, I would like the city to accept it and put it in the records for perpetuity. You will? Thank you very much.
I suspect there's no objections.
I congratulate you, Sue. I'm glad I was there at the beginning.
Janet, did I see you? Have your hand raised? Or no? Okay. I thought you were raising it. Okay. Well, what a special thing for this council to be able to commemorate 20 years of contribution to the city of Berry, and particularly to downtown vitality. You know, to create a vibrant downtown takes a lot of work. You need a lot of different destinations. You need foot traffic. You need that interface at Main Street, at the Main Street level, and Sue's brought that with, with all of you to, to downtown Berry. So what an incredibly special asset and how lucky we are that you chose Berry.
Set them free.
We're going to be talking about the exciting Capitol Fire Aid.
Oh, mutual 8 MOU.
Thank you.
Was your intention to?
I can do it before, after, when things better. I don't have Tracy's letter.
I've got it.
Okay. All right. As that, as we wrap that up, I'll take up item B1, which is reading the letter that was sent from the governor to, to the Berry Partnership, care of Tracy Lewis, Executive Director. It reads, "Dear Tracy, I wanted to reach out to let you know how impressed I was by the lights in City Hall Park and Main Street this holiday season. As you know, I grew up in Berry and have fond memories of my experiences, the people in the community. As I drove up Main Street around Christmas, I was pleasantly surprised by the number of lights decorating the city. They were tastefully done, and I was struck by how welcoming atmos, by, by the welcoming atmosphere they created. I don't recall seeing downtown look as vibrant as it did this year, and I wanted to give credit where credit is due. I would like to show my thanks by declaring an official recognition of your leadership on this project through my Raise of Kindness Initiative. Two years ago, we were on lockdown during the holidays due to an uptick in COVID-19. We didn't have much to look forward to, so I asked Vermonters to help us, help us light the way. As we come out of the pandemic, your beautiful light display brings much-needed energy to the downtown. The leadership and hard work that went into decorating the downtown is a great example of Berry's community spirit and serves as an inspiration for. of Barry's community spirit and serves as an inspiration for others to step up and light the way. Thank you again, and I hope you continue your good work in Barry throughout the new year. Sincerely, Philip B. Scott, Governor.
And the document is on the other side.
Oh, yeah, okay. And there's a whereas. Maybe this is what you intended me to read. So, state of recognition, State of Vermont Executive Department of Recognition. Whereas Vermonters light the way in many ways, we are known for our commitment to community, our willingness to serve, and for going the extra mile to help those in need. And whereas our state and nation continue to move forward, Vermonters continue to set the example. And whereas, in addition to organized efforts to help our friends, families, and neighbors, sometimes it is the little things, the simple, random, everyday acts of kindness and goodwill that can make all the difference. And whereas Vermonters have always stepped up to meet the moment, going above and beyond to do their part, showing that we are much stronger when we are united. And whereas, to call attention to the raise of kindness and good deeds happening throughout Vermont and the good people making them happen, I am shining a light on acts of kindness, selfless service, and goodwill happening throughout our state. And whereas, the Barry Partnership has taken the lead to decorate Barry's downtown, creating a vibrant and welcoming atmosphere. And whereas, the Barry Partnership's work this holiday season is a great example of Barry's strong community spirit and serves as an inspiration for others to step up and light the way. Now therefore, I, Philip B. Scott, Governor, hereby recognize and honor the Barry Partnership for lighting the way and being a ray of kindness and goodwill given unto my hand in the great seal of the state of Vermont on this 27th day of January 2023. Very nice.
Thank you, Mayor.
With that, I'll take up the item B, approval of the Capitol Fire Mutual Aid concerning affirmation of membership, participation in the Emergency Radio Project, and appointment of the Fire Chief as the city's delegate.
Thank you, Mayor. So, you have a memo in the packet as well as the draft MOU, the Capitol Fire bylaws, and a letter regarding the project that I co-wrote with my counterpart, Montpelier, Bill Frazier, the CVPSA Chair, and the President of Capitol Fire. So, Barry is one of the founding members of Capitol Fire. This organization dates back to 1970. It's, the mission is pretty clear, provide better fire protection and prevention in the service area through cooperation with a lot of member towns in the region. So, the MOU, we're seeking your approval to execute, is being presented to all the member communities represented by Capitol Fire, all 27 of them, and this seeks to reaffirm our membership in this body. It's going to help us with the implementation of our radio project that we are receiving funding from through the state, and will also allow us to formally designate our new Fire Chief, although our deputy Fire Chief serves as his delegate, as he did for Chief Brent as well. Actually, Joe, you're currently Vice President of Capitol Fire, I believe. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So, anyhow, we, you know, this radio project, we've talked a little bit about, while I've been here, I know this dates back to, precedes me. I know, looking back in the minutes, I believe the last time before I got here, council discussed this in April with a pretty robust briefing on the project. This is to replace some outdated equipment, radio equipment, that is at end of life. The financial implications of this is going to be shared across the Capitol Fire region, and for Barry City, it means about $6,200 per year, and this is going to be put away in separate accounts at Capitol Fire to allow for the replacement of this equipment at the time that it ages out. And this is, this was an assessment mechanism developed based on grant list values across the 27 communities. This was developed by the Waterbury, the retired Waterbury City Manager, Bill Shapaluk, so someone with a lot of experience in this and credibility. And frankly, for my, just for what it's worth, I believe that as we went through the capital plan, having a plan for long-term replacement of assets is a good thing. And so, putting away $6,200 for 10 years, to me, is a very good thing, so that 10 years from now, we're not asking a council to try to find $70,000, $80,000, whatever it may be at that point. We've all put away some money. I'm really excited that, well, Montpelier's taking this up tomorrow, really excited. I heard from our Deputy Chief that Berlin approved this recently, and they actually prepaid their entire 10-year assessment, which is a smart move on their part, I believe. But nonetheless, just, I think, indication of support for this, for this project.
Are there any questions for the city manager on this? Counselor Stokel?
I'm sure it's a question, really. I was looking at all the towns that were involved, and I thought, this seems like a really impressive achievement of coordination and working together, and very promising for, I don't want to open this can of worms, but future dispatch. I mean, it seems great.
Yeah, and I know Joe can speak to it a lot more than I can, but I think regional government is like the hardest thing to do in the public world, and this has existed since 1970. So, I think that this has been a real success story, and Joe, I don't know if you want to speak more to it, but I think it's certainly a really good mechanism for this project moving forward.
Yeah, in 1970, the towns got together and figured out how they could serve each other mutually aid-wise, and they came up with this mutual aid system, which is a common across the country. Barry was one of the founding members of that system. So, through the years, it's matured through the evolution of the fire service, and then one of the founding bedrocks is that continued cooperative measures that we could do. As it comes through the years, dispatching was around that end. Back in 1990s, we received an earmark from Senator Leahy to put the initial system in. And then from there, we've grown it to the best that we can, and it's actually aged out. So, we've had some, Counselor Chambel is quite aware of the efforts that we've done regionally. I've been to all 22 communities, to their respective boards, and they've all supported the request to the legislature for funding, which was quite impressive. Even the Commissioner was quite impressed by that. So, to get everybody forward, I currently have two bodies that have adopted this, Marshfield and Berlin. Marshfield just came into my office this morning, so they're slowly coming through. I'm scheduled to go to Montpelier tomorrow night by the request of Manager Frazier to answer any questions. I think we're on the right path. We have a lot of good foundation brewing here. Both dispatch centers will be revamped and connected electronically for continuity operations, which we've never had. We have a common dispatching protocols and procedures. The MOU that you have in front of me is actually a culmination of work between Capitol Fire to two city managers and CVPSA. So, that's why there's an informational letter from all those folks that have gone through this, and part of the request from the city managers and Manager Shepleck was, one, a reaffirmation of the commitment to Capitol Fire by following the bylaws and the charter, appointing their delegates annually, and having some form of commitment to the radio project and its upgrade. So, in conversations with the managers, the lawyer for Capitol Fire Mutual Aid, we feel that this MOU covers everybody's respective buns, I guess, for lack of a better term, but I think it also, it's fair and equitable as we went through and tried to develop the cost mechanism. Manager Shepleck, who is a numbers man, has really put a lot of time, and I actually took the formula and the spreadsheet to a third-party investment company who said that it's extremely sound and viable. So, we're looking to do things the right way. This is the next step in the process, and I thank you for taking this up tonight.
Counselor Chambel?
Well, thank all of you folks for having put this together and pushed forward for it over and over again. I think it's extremely important, and it's amazing that it is covering such a wide geographical area. Most some places that are probably a hard ask, and they're stepping up to it. I think that's fantastic.
That has been, and there's been a lot of good questions, too, especially from the outlying smaller communities. So, we've strove to engineer a dispatch system that was equitable across the board. So, that's how we came up with the grant list figures.
So, how is the formula? What's the formula look at for establishing this, our $6,256?
So, the manager has a copy of the spreadsheet, and it's based on our grant list, and it's an escalating estimate over the next 10 years, and it's marched out. Each of the communities have been identified in that and what their estimated it's going to be, so it'll be updated year to year on the next grant list that's lodged by their clerk or select board.
It's not $6,000 every year? It gets to be more?
It's a small, it's a small escalator. We tap out at $6,920, 2032.
And then, so how will the money then, how will this money be used?
So, the money will be used for the future upgrades. So, what technology is it is, we are getting estimates from, one, the private contractor, Tel Aviv, and everything, everybody else that we've talked to, Motorola, Tate, and Harris, that the technology lasts about 10 years. So, that's why we chose 10 years. With that numbers, we asked them, what would it cost to, once the infrastructure is made solid and upgraded, what would it cost in 10 years to upgrade just the hardware portion? And that's where we came up with the numbers that you see on the spreadsheet. One thing that we're very fortunate is that Manager Shepleck just retired, and he's looking for a hobby. So, he has offered, he has offered, and we have a meeting coming up, to manage this and manage the finances for Capitol Fire. So, first off, we will be going to the board, we'll be asking for an audit of the books, because we have not had one. So, we're looking to do it right. We're looking for accountability, and we're looking to make the next step. With that, the monies will be put into a separate account and accounted for, and they'll be, have a monthly report that I would absolutely share with everybody, and that is my responsibility to do so. And I would encourage each of the other communities to do the same, that fire chiefs need to be open with their boards, as I have been, and make sure that they are informed in any of the decisions that the mutual aid system is making or in the process of.
Deputy Chief Altucher, the MOU mentions the Emergency Radio Equipment Plan. Is that the Tel Aviv report, or is that a different document?
So, the Tel Aviv report was to evaluate the plan and give us a roadmap on how to replace it.
Yeah.
So, yes, that is the infrastructure on the mountains. The antennas, the connections, the radios in the radio shacks.
And the plan's publicly available for it?
Yeah, the Tel Aviv, and you have received, the board has received a copy of that. We've shared it. Counselor Chambel has that also.
That was included in the April. I mean, we can resend it, but that was part of the April meeting as well.
And so, once the 2.3 million comes in, and there's assessed assessments of all the member municipalities, is, do you anticipate that there's going to be additional costs that happen within the next 10 years?
So, as we know, we live in Vermont, and we have windstorms, we have lightning, we have all that stuff. So, as we look at it, the formula that Manager Shepleck has come up with allows us to be able to make those adjustments and repairs as we can throughout the history of the 10 years. So, hopefully, we don't need to, it becomes very solvent and fluid, and that's what we wanted to do. We wouldn't want to have to come back and say, listen, we need 10 grand per municipality to fix a tower up on Mount Irish or whatever. So, we're looking at, to me, about how we can make this fluid and not have to come back, but also be fiscally responsible, so.
In terms of the reporting and auditing, is it possible to get tracking for the labor hours that each member municipality is putting in, in any material costs they're putting in for mutual aid, to see, just see what the balance is of, to make sure that there's mutually beneficial aid, and it's not just, for instance, Barry City and Montpelier carrying a lot of costs for the region?
So, part of the inception of the mutual aid system was so that we weren't charging each other for mutual aid. So, we, in Barry right now, if, you know, I have four guys on tonight, we would have a big fire. We would have to call an additional manpower in to help fight that. We only have a limited amount of staff. So, we would rely heavily on our mutual aid partners. If they were to turn around and charge us for that, just imagine what that bill would be, especially if we're fighting like the whole fire granite shed, something like that. That was 12, 14 hours, multiple apparatus, as far as from Waterbury, and that Waterbury Tower was up for six hours flowing water. So, just imagine what that cost would be. So, we're not enduring that cost. It's a mutual aid agreement, so it's give and take.
Yeah, but there's no measurement of who's giving and who's taking?
No, we don't.
So, who?
I mean, that would be data that would be nice to have. I mean, and the only reason why I say that is because, you know, as I look at the list, there's quite a few that don't have full-time fire departments, and, you know, it would be nice to have the data, but I'm not going to force you to go get it, so I'm sorry.
No, and it would be.
It has, it is a question that, you know, does make some, make some sense.
And there are communities that utilize Barry and Montpelier more than some of the others. I can tell you that I may have been to Roxbury no times in my career, 15 years being here with the city. So, but I've been in Norfield a couple of times. Norfield's been back to us a couple of times. So, there are some communities that rely on us because of the staffing. I will not lie to you that volunteerism is a huge issue throughout the state and throughout the region. So, it's a give and take. So, but when we need them at 2:00 in the morning, we can put on 35 or 40 firefighters here at no cost to the city, and that is irreplaceable.
Right. No, no, and I get that. It was just a comment.
Sure. No, I understand that.
Counselor Lozon?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Joe, I'm kind of having deja vu as I listen to the mayor's and Counselor Gooten's questions, and they're good questions. You know, we've had them plenty of times before, and I've asked those questions as well, but what it really comes down to is just neighbor helping neighbor. You know, when someone's home is burning in Berlin, and we have the resources to send, we send them. And on, thankfully, the very few times in Barry City where our fire department has been overwhelmed because it's a five alarm, you know, thankfully, other municipalities have showed up to help as well. This is getting a little beyond that now, though, Joe. This is getting, you know, Nicholas, if I could, what is the total amount that is going to be collected annually from all the municipalities? Because I didn't have the spreadsheet, just first year one.
$91,000, Counselor?
Yeah, so, you know, talking about $1 million over 10 years, so I hope, I was thrilled to hear, Joe, that you're going to have an audit. I'm hopeful that that would be an annual event, or at least a biannual event. And then also, you know, again, volunteers are wonderful, and I certainly appreciate Bill's, you know, willingness to volunteer and help the organization out, and I know that comes from his heart. But I hope that, you know, I mean, obviously, there's going to be cost because audits aren't free, and, you know, I hope that Bill is going to be bonded and insured if he's going to be looking after the finances. And these are just suggestions. I think the world of Bill, and I appreciate his willingness to volunteer, but, and lastly, now that we're getting into some significant asset value in terms of the communications equipment, I didn't hear, I didn't hear anything about cost to ensure and maintain that. So, is that somewhere included, or is that going to be an additional assessment? And keep in mind, when asked these questions, Chief, I'm all for this. This is a good system.
Counselor Lozon, thank you. It's very important to understand that we currently pay $400 a year to Capitol Fire as part of the dues. The dues include insuring the towers and the radio equipment, and the operations and the connections. So, yes, we do already do additional, we've been paying this right along, and we create a budget which will be public, and we put out to everybody, and we're actually working on that right now, and that will be absorbed through the operations budget for Capitol Fire.
Isn't, but you think that that is going to have to increase? You know, you're talking about a few million dollars in communications equipment, and I'm not sure we're at that, we're at that level of asset value now. So, is that, is that, I guess my question is just, is that $400 going to have to increase, you think?
So, we've already taken the steps in the last two years to increase it from $250 to $250. So we've already taken the steps in the last two years to increase it from $250 to $400 to address the new operation measures. Some of that will also include the audit, which we've accounted for in our increase in the budget. So we have looked at that. We look at a modest increase projected of about 4% a year just to try to keep up with inflation. I know that inflation is higher now, but I think we're trying to be realistic and looking what our costs are. We also contacted Consolidated Communications, who also has looked out and projected out what our future costs would be. We try to integrate cellular and broadband into that. Fiber to each of the mountaintops were just so far out of our reach. It was about $110,000 a year just to maintain those connections. So we really looked hard at everything that we have and including the insurance end to make sure that we're not hit with any emergency repairs or anything else.
Yeah, good stuff, Joe. Thank you for the presentation. And Mayor, I'd make the motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding.
They're looking for a motion to authorize the execution of the MOU. Appoint the fire chief as the designee for Berry City's delegate. Is that considered a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. There's a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
Just, sorry, just to get the wording right, appoint the fire chief or their designee as Berry City delegate.
That true.
The record will show it, so indicate.
Thanks.
So further discussion is, so is the principal place of business for this entity is the town of Berlin? Is, so the town hosts the meetings and will they also be? But the equipment ownership is going to rest with this new municipality, right?
So it's not a new municipality. It's registered with the Secretary of State. We are in good standings with them. Why the charter, it started out in Berlin. They chose it because of central location. The challenge that we have is that the town of Berlin, we have no place to meet and there was no virtual presence. So because of COVID, they tried to, they moved to Berry City and they voted to do that. So they did not amend the charter and that's why we meet here in the city at the alumni hall. It's virtual and we've had very good attendance after making a hybrid meeting.
What happens if Berry City and some other municipalities approve this MOU, but others don't? Does it go into effect once there's been a majority of the member municipalities? Or, and because then you end up with a big funding gap and who's going to bridge that gap if the other municipalities don't step up?
So the goal is for all the 22 pledged support for the radio system to continue and take this next step. I have not heard any of the boards ask any questions or invite me, other than the City of Montpelier. So I anticipate full support of the 22 communities. We've actually had other communities come to us, Nicholas and I. Brad met with the town of Randolph and the town of Brookfield. Brookfield was a founding member of the mutual aid system and they've asked to come back. So we're actually seeing more people come back. Chelsea, Chelsea was not there for quite some time and they're looking to come back on board. So as we, as we've created and reaffirmed this organization, we're seeing more energy and attraction to the outside communities.
And I would just clarify that, Joe, you haven't had anyone come back to ask you for approval of this, but you've been to all these communities multiple times with support with these boards.
And we have 22 letters of support that we provided the commissioner on our application for the 2.44 million, just so we get our numbers correct.
And then just thinking, you know, 10 years down the line, the bylaws, it sounds like the goal is to establish a regional dispatch center through this entity. Is that still the case?
I guess all the cards are on the table. We're currently going through an impact study with Tel Aviv now that are evaluating both dispatch centers. I can't speak to the fact of where it's going to be in five or 10 years. But all the cards are on the table and we're open to their, so basically having them come in, look at our operations, give us some advice and tell us how's the roadmap to get there. Meeting with the commissioner, she endorsed that. She thought it was a great idea to make sure we identify our strengths and weaknesses and where we can go. So we're really on a roadmap. Everything is on the table and nothing has been decided.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Altworth. Any other questions before call the question?
Just, just a little support, Mayor. I think I understand the questions you're asking. And, you know, in some level, like I said, I really support the concept of this neighbor helping neighbor. But it's not lost on me that some smaller municipalities are really struggling to maintain their volunteer fire departments. And so, you know, going forward, I think this is a great thing. But going forward, like you, I'll be asking a lot more questions in terms of who's volunteering, who's contributing? And are there, are there some municipalities that, because they have a very limited volunteer staff or perhaps no volunteer staff, are sort of getting a free ride at the expense of others within the system? So I'm going to be kind of little sensitive to that forward. I'm still incredibly supportive. I think it's a great system, but I'm going to have questions going forward, I'm sure.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Council Lozon. That's definitely my line of thinking in that, you know, it's good to extend a hand of help. But making sure that there's balance and when things do get imbalanced, and that's where I think measurement is really important, that there be a regional governance structure to make sure that there's equity. Because certainly Berry City voters, I think, carry a lot of regional burdens already and taxpayers and making sure that there's a regional governance system that ensures fair share pay. And Grand List is a good indicator of that, to make sure that there aren't free riders. And then I also think like if this becomes an operational center and has a much larger substantial budget, that there might need to be more direct accountability to the voters. Because as it stands now, it's, the chiefs are at the table. And then they're report to managers, then report to councils. And that's a lot of layers in between the voters and decisions about money. So that'd be something that I'd be thinking about moving forward. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. That takes us to a discussion of the letter to Green Mountain Transit regarding service cuts prepared by Counsel Wazak and Dearing. Counsel Wazak?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sad Counselor Dearing wasn't here. We had, we worked well on this one. So yeah, honestly, most of this letter that is contained in the packet was written by Jesse Rosato and myself and Counselor Dearing offered some edits and formatting, for lack of a better term. You know, what I'd like to do is ask the council to instruct the manager to send this letter to GMT and those listed on behalf of the city. But, you know, in having conversations with Jesse and things have happened, we're pretty locked into the content of this letter. So I don't want to say that like we won't accept any suggestions. Because we want, we want to hear feedback. I'm thinking of it in ordinance language, a substantive versus non-substantive change. For example, I have listed the Honorable State Representative Jonathan William. That is not his name. So that will have to be a light edit right there. But, you know, I think Jesse's read the letter, council has the letter in their packets and happy to answer any questions, though I'd probably just refer them to Jesse, to be honest. Or if Jesse has anything to add before we take any questions.
Are you accepting edits, Counselor?
Jesse's going to say, Jesse's going to say something first and then.
Oh, of course.
Hi there. So I'm Jesse Rosato from Merchant Street. And gosh, you know, this is, I'm pretty sure I'm up to 10 times addressing this council. And I still get nervous every time I come up here. I'm not a public speaker. So, but I'm glad to be here and I'm getting more comfortable. Maybe I'll be a frequent flyer in this room, like. But I think it's helpful to, in order for folks to discuss this letter, I think it's helpful to just quickly review like where we've been with this discussion over the bus service. So first, I just want to say that this bus service, I was a rider of the bus service. I came to move back to Berry from New York City in 2013. I lived for a few years without a car. And I caught the first bus out of Berry at 6:00 AM and the last bus back into Berry at 8:00 PM. And my ride was 6:00 AM to 6:25 to Montpelier. I would pick up the Waterbury commuter in Montpelier at 6:40 and take it to the Green Mountain Coffee Roasters coffee shop there in Waterbury. And I would get off there and transfer to a Stowe bus and get on Route 100 commuter. And then I would get off in front of my employer and then I would reverse that trip on the way home. And thank God for that service. Like it really was a blessing to me to be able to do that. It enabled me to have public transportation, transportation to and from work. And I didn't have to have a car. And so that was, and so I wouldn't recommend four years on the bus, like waiting in the cold at bus stops. But you know what? For somebody that needs it, like I needed it, it was a good option and it was a true blessing. Right now, well, let me say, let me just say this, that that bus service that was possible from 2013 when I started, prior by a few years, as far back as I can gather from talking to people, and all the way up until about the middle of COVID 2021. So well over a decade, that schedule served the Berry City community very well. And so, so we know that there's been cuts. And I just want to fast forward to, to, when we had a discussion, we invited the fellow from the Green Mountain Transit Authority here to the council. And I participated in that meeting on Zoom. I was sunburnt faced and dirty faced out in North Carolina, joining from a hotel room. I was out on, working out there. And I went back and reviewed the tape. And what we heard, and you guys probably will remember, is we heard that our hands are tied. There's nothing we can do here. We have no drivers. We have no resources. And it said, we have no other choice. We got to cut the bus service. And so that was, that was what we heard. The council accepted that. You guys also will remember, I pushed back like, hey, man, these cuts, you know, they start off as temporary, they go permanent. And we, that was, we talked about that as well. So that was what was discussed at that meeting, but what was not discussed at that meeting was, and had it been discussed at the meeting, that they were, at that time, increasing service to Stowe Mountain Resort while cutting service here in Berry. And so, you know, I just thought it was like pretty disingenuous of that director of the transportation company. Because the reality is, is that I see in April, the public letter from the Stowe Mountain Resort manager, who said, hey, look, we're ramping up our service. We're going to have more buses. This is going to alleviate our parking concerns and our traffic problems here in Stowe. And so it's impossible in my mind to think that on August 7th or August 2nd, when the director of the bus company was in here speaking to you folks, that he didn't know that he was rampant, that he was chasing business in Stowe while taking away services here in Berry. Those berries, we established during our meeting, those services were fully funded. They have received the funding to provide the services. And then they were shortchanging the services here in town to chase some other business out of town. It's hard for me to imagine when they wrote their grants for the bus service for the new bus station down in Montpelier. I mean, I haven't seen those grants, but it's hard for me to imagine they write those grants and say, we need this money. Please bless us with this funding so we can provide worse service to the community. No, that doesn't work that way. They were saying, hey, we're going to improve service. We're doing a good job here. You know, and so, and really what I saw in that day is that they were like less than forthcoming with you guys when you were asking for, give me a picture of the complete picture of what's going on with the transportation in and out of Berry City. And they were less than forthcoming and, and so that's what it looks an awful lot like to me. The final thing that I want to say before we get into the letter is that I was especially thankful to Representative Lozon that day because I was making the point, these things become permanent. There's nothing more permanent than a temporary solution. And that's kind of, and that's what I feared in that moment. Hey, man, we're going to get permanent, really bad commuter bus service. And Lozon looked the director in the eye and said, hey, are these permanent cuts or these temporary cuts? And he said, no, no, they're temporary. We have every expectation that we will make these cuts. That, you know, we reverse this when we can, as soon as we can. Just recently, Bernadette, I forgot her last name. Bernadette Rose, yes. She emailed me an article from Vermont VT Digger. And I just want to read just out loud for everyone to hear. The, this was an article talking to the new director of the Green Mountain Transit. Said the Green Mountain Transit operating budget for 2024 fiscal year, which starts in July, reflects those challenges, talking about challenges of budgeting and such. To balance the books, the agency has said it would need to start charging fares again on its route in Chittenden County, known as its urban system, for the first time since the outset of the pandemic. It also plans to make permanent a slate of service reductions, including longer amounts of times between buses on some routes that have been in place throughout the pandemic. Clark, who is the new director, said the agent does not have enough drivers to reverse those cuts, even if they wanted to. Even if they wanted to. He noted that about a third of the agency's route in Chittenden County can be currently operated only because drivers are working contractually obligated overtime. So he went into, you know, the problem. So exactly as I said that it would be, it looks an awful lot like these cuts are going to be permanent if we allow it. What I see here is a kind of like a dereliction of duty by the leadership of the bus company and also the board. I mean, they're responsible as well. I mean, they run the place. And it looks like they're having a hard time running the bus company. And so I don't know if we got the right people in place or what. But what this letter is about is, first of all, I just want to say I'm really proud of the letter because like in that letter, if you read carefully, you're going to hear Teddy's voice. You're going to hear Representative Dearing's voice. You're also going to hear my voice. And so that's like, that's three people from the community. We're all very different in some ways and very the same in others. And one way that we're very the same is we all care about our community, want the best for the people here. But that letter really just makes clear like, hey, you know, Berry City is committed to public transportation. We, and our expectation is that you guys help us out and get us what you said you would, which is run the commuter service. It seems to me that they're just not focusing on commuter services anymore. They're just kind of found other areas to focus. And so what the letter says is like, hey, like, let's just get back to focusing on this. This is what we hope for, what we expect from you guys. And I thought it was a well-written letter. And so this council authorizing this letter to go out in the name of the city, I kind of see is super important. I also, not kind of see, I actually see is super important. I also see it as like the bare minimum, you know, like the minimum that we can do to support the people who could use that, the future Jesse's out there that can use that ride back and forth to work, you know, and getting their kids to school and such. I mean, that public transportation is very, very important. These cuts make that commuter service really poor. And so we want to make sure we get back on track.
Jesse? See, everybody's hand trays. Let's go down the line. Counsel Stuckel.
So you don't want to put in this letter, though, something about, could you make a response or could we have a meeting within the next two months? Something that puts some timeframe around, please make a response so that we can take some steps forward.
Yeah, so thank you for the question. And that's not, that's not a bad question at all. But I think that their last visit seems to be like, didn't come in good faith. And I think that the time for talking is behind us, you know, like we, you know, they, I mean, my mind says, what are they going to do? They're going to come in here and they're going to tell us about their problems and stuff. And they're going to make excuses and they're going to say, you know, and we're all going to be. you know, and and we're and we're all going to be sitting here like, do we believe what they're saying? Like, you know what I'm saying? They weren't forthcoming the last time they came here. So that's that's my initial thought. Thank you.
Yes, I typically agree with that. But it depends on who's in the room. People listen differently depending upon who's in the room. So if you can bring in some of the other people on this list to that room meeting, I think they would listen and respond differently.
Yeah, I I mean, my plan is to get those folks involved. Because I actually think that that there needs to be like more attention paid to who's leading the bus company. It's not clear to me that the people that are running the bus company has the chops to run a bus company. I mean, that's, you know, for lack of a better term. And so, I mean, and that obviously is not going to happen here at Berry Berry City Council, I mean. But to to address that, so I mean, I guess we would have to like talk to those other people. But maybe getting them into the Transportation Committee at the Legislature or something would be like a more like suitable place to to. And and I think that, to your point, that would be and and also getting more than just me, I hope you folks would support it too, but also like community organizations like the Worker Center and different places that would benefit from good commuter service here in central Vermont too, so.
You want to go last or next?
Just I'll go now, just for a couple of quick things. I, as you said that, Jesse, I wrote down that we should add the Committees on Transportation in the House and the Senate to that list. And just just because it might answer some other folks' questions, a couple of other edits. Right now, the letter reads, in the nearly nine months since the August 2 meeting, excuse me. It says, in the nearly six months since the August 2 meeting, it is now six months and one week. So that's a quick edit. And John Moore, I incorrectly labeled his title as the Executive Director of Green Mountain Transit when his title at the time was General Manager, and he is now the Assistant General Manager. Now I'll go last.
Questions I had was, who's, is Bonnie Wanniger still the Central Vermont's representative? Who who appoints, who has the appointment authority to for GMT? Is it the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission?
No, if there is a kind of pointing, I mean, they're they're overseen by, they've got their own charter as part of the Chittenden Chittenden County Transit Authority, which has a charter.
Well, that's the reason I asked that is just, just who's representing Berry on the board? And then who chooses that person? And and certainly, we have a representative at Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission, but we don't have anybody direct from Berry to Green Mountain Transit.
Right, there are two or three board members from the GMT region that serve on the CCTA board. GMT was merged with CCTA back when I was on the board. So.
Was it 2015? Oh, well, at some point, it used to be, I guess I heard that it used to be like something that stood alone here in central Vermont. And then it got merged to up with Chittenden County. Was that, was that in like 2015? It was way back further?
Sorry, right now, there's a Washington County, each county outside of Chitt, some places in Chittenden, Heinsberg, Milton-Williston have their own representatives to the board. There's a Washington County member of the Board of Commissioners of Green Mountain Transit, whose name is Christian Meyer.
Oh, that's the interim director of the Regional Planning Commission. So Janet represents Berry City at the Regional Planning Commission. So that'd be something that Janet might know a little bit more about. The other thing I would notice, I was presenting to the Stowe's Planning Commission last night. And I usually, when I go to communities, walk around, drive around a little bit. And I saw a ton of bus service. And I don't know, maybe they have different financial arrangements than we have. Maybe there's subsidies coming from, but I will say there was a lot of, I saw three buses going around in a very short amount of time in downtown Stowe. Downtown Stowe, yeah.
Yeah, I saw the same thing during Christmas, like I was building a house up there. I was like, man, there's a lot of buses. And then I Googled it. And that's how I stumbled upon the article and what was going on.
So Shonville?
I just have to be petty. I know one of my kids who was commuting from Plainfield up to Burlington, used to ride the bus. And she had only amazing things to say and talked about the range of people who rode the bus, you know, everybody from judges to university professors to people from Berry, the whole gamut, you know, it it served a huge population of people who were riding it for all sorts of different reasons. I find it ironic that Stowe, and I'll make bold here, probably has resources on berries and that somehow they get to claim a need, which is to keep their city, their town. Unless it's a city, I don't think Stowe is a city. You know, I have a little resentment about that. I have to say it loud and clear. I would love Vermont Digger to see this letter. I assume they will. You know, I I'm glad you're bringing this forward because it it is another example of hitting vulnerable populations to support more well-being. And I have an issue with that. Especially for things that I can't afford to do. Sorry.
So I just want to let you know, that's not petty, that's truthful. I mean, and and I say that because as, you know, you're on the current, the board for the Justice Center. And I was on the COSA program and every single time we talk about bringing people into Berry City, it was like, what about Stowe? You know, because it it is inequitable. So I would agree with you on that. I'm ready to to make the motion, but I understand that Counselor Lozan and it looks like Stephen Finner would like to speak. I I do want to make a point that not overly excited about getting involved in this way, except for the fact that we have skin in the game. We have $38,401 that was approved last year. And that's the largest item on that list. And to have, I mean, maybe Stowe is providing $50,000, $60,000, very possible. But, you know, we don't have to provide $38,000.
I do if the voters say we do.
This is correct. I apologize. I apologize, yes.
Well, we can withhold them like you know.
No, we can't withhold, we cannot withhold. However, as a council, we can say, do not vote for that item. If, can we?
Strongly recommend you not to make comments like that.
Never mind. Never mind.
As the Counselor Lozan and then Dr. Finner.
Thank you, Mayor. Paragraph five. The intent of this letter is not to tell anyone how to run a bus company, comma, but to make clear. That's exactly the purpose of the letter, to tell them how to run their bus company. To start the buses at 6:00 and end the buses at 8:00 PM. So what I'd like to do is simply say, the intent of this letter is to make clear the city of Berry's expectations for our bus service. Because we are telling them how to run the bus company. We're we're telling them we would like the route restored. So it's, you know, it simply is inaccurate and and I don't think it's it's forceful enough. We are, in fact, telling them how to run their bus company. We're asked, we're telling them that we need the 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM routes restored. And then just the last sentence, we look forward to your attention to this issue. You know, again, if you're looking for action. If he calls someone and says, well, did we hire another driver? Nope. Okay, well, I gave it my attention. I think we need to be a little more specific in terms of what our expectation is. And if the expectation is that we want these routes restored within 60 days. You know, I I think we need to put a timeframe on it and and reiterate what are requested, what are demanded responses. And that's what started this whole thing. So those are just my two edits.
Point well taken, Counselor. Definitely no problem with the striking not to tell anyone how to run a bus company, because you're right. And then, so we look forward to your attention to this issue and restoration of the city's bus service within 60 days?
Yeah, perfect. Or 30 days, or 15, they know it's coming.
Let's do 30. We're already feeling spicy.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I I think Counselor Lozan does deserve the the credit that Jesse mentioned in making sure that there was an accountability measure when they came and spoke before us and asking that, asking for the commitment that this would would only be a temporary reduction in service. So thanks for being sharp that that night and.
I wasn't that sharp, Mayor. I appreciate it, but I wasn't that sharp because I didn't ask him to define temporary. But thank you.
Dr. Finner?
Yes, one, as an editor, obviously, the temptation that people are doing fine. When I moved back here a year ago, October, part of my choice in moving to the apartment I did was the bus service, the distance from the stop, and the service frequency. And I really want to thank Jesse for his hard work and service on this. This is so outstanding. And I have found, on the one hand, that GMTA is responsive to me as a disabled senior in arranging what they call deviation rides, medical rides, and sort of thing. On the other hand, I have found that it's really not one bus company. It's three different bus companies that have come together. And if you even listen to their telephone messages, they give different starting and ending parts for their office hours. There's a lack of consistency in training, people who answer the phone, and they have all their work to be done. And on top of that, I was used to a half hour wait and all of a sudden it became an hour and a couple of buses disappeared. And I'm fortunate, I'm retired, I'm not depending on it to get to work on time and that sort of thing. So I really think that taking a pretty tough stance and direct stance is very appropriate. I have not enjoyed diversity that Counselor Shandell referred to. I have found that most of the people who ride the bus when I'm on there are people who really need that service. And and they they need it to get to work, they need it. I I observed every time I'm there, people who are going to Price Chopper and buying lots of food and then struggling on the bus. I mean, it's 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 such a necessary service. And anything we can do to restore it to what it should be, I applaud. And again, I thank Jesse as well as as Counselors Wazak and Deering for moving ahead on this.
Thank you, Dr. Finner. So it sounds like we have a few minor edits and then yeah, and I just wanted to add one more. I would just be curious what it's what's involved in getting a seat on the board at Green Mountain Transit. I just asking them because I was looking through their Title 24A where they're enabling language for their charter. And it looks like we're a municipality that is authorized to hold an election to join a Green Mountain Transit Authority. And then just to the point of the voter-approved funding policy, if this were put in the budget, it'd be a different conversation versus voter-approved funding. So so that might be something we think about for a future year, so.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, are you suggesting incorporating that into the letter somewhere?
Yeah, I was just wondering, like, having them explain, like, can Berry City have a seat at the table?
I don't, I'm not, I want to let you speak too, Jesse. I don't know where that would fit, just.
Yeah, we could have that as a side, maybe even like a side conversation. We could do it as a side conversation. But but I but I'm sorry, where you recognize me, okay, sorry. So I first, I just want to say thank you all, especially Representative Deering and Teddy for 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 helping me with this. And for all the people that reached out, a lot of people emailed and stuff, you know. A lot of you guys will know that I, you know, I own a car, I own a pickup, I'm no longer on the bus. And you'll see me zooming around in my new pickup that I got this year all over Berry, doing the speed limit, of course. But, you know.
It's not, you'll take the ticket.
But, you know, but what what really this conversation is about is making sure that this bus is there for the next Jesse that needs it. You know what I'm saying? And making sure that it's there for all the people in the community. And so it's really cool that how many people have reached out and how many people have helped. And certainly, Counselor Lozan and different people have have been just really helpful. So it's humbling and 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 I'm grateful for 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 the help. And it will really mean something to the people at those bus stops. So so the second thing I'll say is that if you guys do get a chance to get a Berry representative on the board, I would be glad to serve. I would really love to do that. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for keeping honest about it. All right, so unless there are any final edits, did we, was there a motion?
So moved.
Second by Counselor Stockwell, second by Counselor Booton. Any further discussion?
I just want to make sure that what I'm writing down is approved as edited.
Yes, that is, well.
And I've been keeping track of what's been talked about. I'll coordinate with me.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. That takes us to upcoming business. So we have a
You're free to stay.
And then, so we have a week off next week and then we're going to loop back on the, I'm forgetting, 27th? 21st, okay. And then we also have one last meeting on the 28th. I know on the the list is the committee reset. Are there other big items coming up from your end? Okay. Other other items coming from council?
I would just remind, we do have the special meeting tomorrow evening at 5:30.
So and that's on real estate and TIF, yep.
Oh, that's Zoom only? Yeah, of course it is. Because we're allowed to do that. Great.
All right. So if there are no other items for upcoming business to preview, that takes us to roundtable. And I'll start with our COVID recovery online. Counselor Lozan.
Yeah, you know, I think, what a strange, I mean, I think fully recovered, but, you know, it takes, it was kind of, it wasn't a great week last week. But I'm reminded, you know, not only the counselors who wrote and and other people watching wrote private notes, but but also folks who actually stopped by the house to to see medical people to see, you know, can we take your vitals? Which, like, no, my vitals are good, I have no heart. You know, it takes something like that to just remind me of how we're just so fortunate to live in a place like Berry. So to all of you, I decided to stay away for another week because, you know, I literally sit six inches from you know, from Counselor Stockwell. If I sat six inches from Counselor Wazak, I might be there.
That's fair.
But I'll see you, I guess it's going to be two weeks. And with that, I'm all set. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Lozan. I'll go to Ward one. Counselor Shonville.
I'm I'm glad tonight came out as it did. Seems like it was a fairly positive evening in so many ways. And yeah, that that's just a lovely thing for me because not totally Pollyanna, but I have an edge of it. With that, I'll pass.
It's Counselor Shonville. Counselor Booton?
I mean, I don't know how positive it was for Stowe tonight. Pass.
Yeah, just echoing what Mel just said, this was a very good evening. Thank you. I'll pass.
Counselor Stockwell?
This was a great evening. And I, you know, I know I've mentioned this before, but it really gladdens me to see people buying houses that have been stood vacant and redoing them. And I was carrying my petition around, there's this guy who bought a house on Elliston. And he's taking, you know, he's taken out truckloads of stuff. He's ripping off, you know, things that are broken. And I said, thank you so much. And he kind of looked at me like, thank you so much for doing this. But also, I I'd gone by Jody's hairstyles and, you know, she hasn't worked on me yet. And she has, she completely renovated that building. And she has, she completely renovated that building, and that looks so different on Seminary Street. And she bought the house next to it, and she's redoing that. And that's just really great. That's a real lift for Ward 2. And, and with that, I'll pass.
And I'll, I'll pass too. Yeah, Counselor Deering, yeah.
Just constantly humbled by the work that our citizens are involved with. Jesse, I really appreciate you in working with the GMT, the GMT letter. Really, you were the driving force behind a lot of that. And it just speaks to, to how important it is to you. So really, I'm just constantly humbled by the amazing individuals that we have in our community that are looking to step up and make differences in people's lives. Even though he's already bought in a vehicle, and the bus doesn't necessarily affect him, he's looking for the future Jesse to help out. So I'll end with that. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Deering.
Motion to adjourn?
There's a motion to adjourn by Counselor Booton, the second by Counselor Wazak at 8:00, it looks like 26:07. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Good night, Tom. Good night, Michael. Good night, Rosemary. Good night, Raylene. Raylene. Dave. Good night, Helene. Good night, Ryan. I always love to see who sticks around to listen to me.